Thank you, Councilwoman. Will the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G 6617 and 6640 through 6642, S 46159 through 46192, and Resolution 21798.
Thank you. We have an interpreter with us here today, Mario. Will you please introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My name is Mario Warajas and I'm going to be making a brief statement for the Spanish speakers. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Mario Warajas. Voy a estar sirviendo como se interprete de esta tarde. Si acaso necesitaron un intérprete de español, favor de acudir al personal de la ciudad en la parte de atrás del edificio para poder conseguir sus aparatos para la interpretación. Gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mario. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion to approve mayor and city council board and commission nominations?
Yes, we have a motion to approve mayor and council boards and commissions nominations. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We have board members to be sworn in today, including board members who will do very important work on our city budget, so I will swear them in. Thank you. I state your name do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona and that I will bear true We next move to the liquor license portion of our agenda. faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion to approve items 2 through 15, except for item 2.
and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of Citizens'
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Commission on Home Rule according to the best of my ability. Passes unanimously. We next move to item number 2, which is an item in Councilwoman Stark's district. So help me God. We have several cards on the item. Congratulations. Thank you. Councilwoman, how would you like to proceed?
I guess we can go ahead and take testimony. I'm very familiar with Moon Valley Grill. I live maybe three-quarters a mile from it, and I've had a chance to talk to the owner and he's very excited about adding something new to his restaurant, but let's hear testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll invite people down to the podium and you'll have two minutes to testify. We'll begin with the applicant Joe Jackson, followed by Jerry Sims. And Jerry Sims will be followed by Tom Author.
Madam Mayor, Honorable Council Members, my name's Tom Author. I'm one of the owners of Arizona Downs. This is Joe Jackson. We are obviously in support of this off-track betting proposal. We have been before this body before. The only people that ever protest our application is members of Turf Paradise, our competitor. We feel strongly that this is just an amenity that can be offered by the bar owner and there's really no reason other than our competitor wanting us to not succeed, to have a problem with this. I don't know if you all had a copy of the letter from the owner of the bar? Did you guys get a chance, all get a chance to read it? Send it to Deborah or Councilwoman Stark. It says, "My name is Roger Lindstrom and I'm the owner of the Moon Valley Grill located at 1514 North 7th Street. I have owned the establishment for approximately 10 years. My establishment is on the agenda Wednesday, December 20th as a subject of vote to allow off-track betting for the establishment. I'm sorry I'm unable to attend, but shuffled my schedule last week to attend when I was removed abruptly from the consent agenda. I have a second business I operate and I simply can't alter my schedule today. Hopefully this correspondence will suffice. As I understand the situation, the owner of Turf Paradise contacted some members of the city council expressing concerns over the financial future of Arizona Downs as well as its proximity to Turf Paradise. I assure you that the Arizona Downs people have been very upfront and honest about their financial situation and am comfortable with my decision to move forward with them. The opening of an OTB at the Moon Valley Grill will not make or break my establishment. It is simply another amenity I can offer my patrons and it would be unfair for it to be given to my competitors and not to me, provided I meet the requirements of the State Racing Commission. Final approval awaits hearing of the State Racing Commission. To the best of my knowledge, no establishment relies on OTB for its ultimate success any more than they rely on a lottery machine. Turf Paradise intrusion to this decision seems to come from its desire to maintain its monopoly and not from a genuine concern for the benefit of my business or horse racing in general. I urge you to approve this today so that I can be presented for consideration by the Arizona Racing Commission for their approval." One of the things I believe you'll hear is...
Is Joe Jackson going to donate his two minutes to you? Otherwise, your time is up.
I think he should. Thank you, Joe. The... One of the things I think you're going to hear is this radius stuff that keeps coming up. We were here 10 months ago and Councilwoman Williams voted against us and she said, "I have..." They promised me they would not present another off-track betting until I had my report done on proximity. And we did some research. No report was ever started. At the end of that statement, she said, "That report is almost done." That was 10 months ago. We simply can't sit around and wait. There is no problem with proximity. Her concern at the time, in particular, was one OTB at 28th Street and the Carefree Highway. Since that time, they actually did better by $20,000 last year when they competed against us than this year when we shut down the OTB that was supposedly competing with them. These are not... We are not cannibalizing anybody's OTBs. This is... It's good for horse racing. It's good for the community. They're good jobs. They're a nice amenity and they... This is simply just an action by a competitor who simply wants to drive us out of business. So I strongly urge you to continue assisting us in our growth, the jobs we're creating, and helping year-round horse racing in the state of Arizona. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions right now.
Thank you very much.
We will have Jerry Sims, followed by Carol Turoff.
My name is Jerry Sims. Mayor Gallego and city council folks, this is not a competitor issue. Let me tell you, I'm trying to keep racing alive in Arizona. And the competitor that they call themselves, they opened their meet this summer and they ran 30... They were supposed to run 33 days. Now, understand that horsemen go up there with their horses and expect to run a season. After 13 days of racing, they closed the track. They didn't have the money to continue this meet that just went on. They got an investor about a month or so later and they ran another 13 days, but understand those horsemen were all trapped up there. Since that time, at the most recent... At a recent commission meeting, the gentleman that was just talking to you said they closed six out of seven OTBs. They had seven OTBs, they closed six of them. His brother next came up and said, "We are out of money." Now, that... I have it on tape if anyone wanted to hear it. It condensed down where you could just hear what they're saying to the racing commission and the regulators. What I don't want to have happen is have customers go in there. First, when they close all these OTBs, people think it's us. They think those are our... They don't know the difference between theirs and ours. And if they can't pay a customer, which I can tell you has happened, there's going to be a story if that person doesn't get paid, that customer, because it takes about a month to get paid from the other track. If someone's betting on a track in Gulf Stream in Florida, it takes a month. I'm going to be reading an article with a headline that's going to say, "Racetrack Can't Pay Customer." They're going to think it's us. So those are my main concerns and I will tell you that the main tracks that are bet on are California. I'll just finish up with this, just to tell you, they don't have those tracks because they're in a dispute with California. They'll blame me, they blame the racing commission, but they have a dispute so they can't get Del Mar, they can't get Santa Anita, they can't get the main tracks that are important here. So, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Carol Turoff will be followed by David Johnson.
Mayor Gallego and members of the council, my name is Carol Turoff. I'm here today because I received a letter from the City of Phoenix, Phoenix License Servicing Department, postmarked September 9th of this year. The letter advised me that I was being alerted to the fact that Moon Valley Grill, a casual neighborhood restaurant, had applied for an off-track betting permit. And because I lived within one-eighth of a mile of that location, that I could make comments, and so that's why I'm here today. Moon Valley Grill is considered just a neighborhood hamburger restaurant. A lot of families go there. I don't see it as being conducive to off-track betting. It's... In that same shopping center, there is a brand-new evangelical church that was just built. There are a number of other churches, Lutheran, LDS, Catholic, all within a very short parameter of that shopping center, as well as lots of schools. And my... In my viewpoint, having off-track betting in that shopping center is not really compatible with the neighborhood. And so that's why I'm here today and just wanted to make these comments to you and I hope you'll consider them. And I appreciate having the opportunity to be here today to address you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker on this... Not our final speaker. David Johnson.
Madam Mayor, honorable members of the council, my name is David Johnson. I am the vice president of Turf Paradise. Turf Paradise is a local Phoenix-based company located at 1501 West Bell Road. We sit in the heart of District 3. We've been in operation for nearly 65 years. We employ more than 325 people, most of them whom are from the local community. We are home to over 450 horsemen and jockeys who move here with their families from all across the United States and Canada. They go to school here. They rent homes, they buy homes, they shop in the markets, they buy gas, they eat in the restaurants. Together, our economic impact to the state is over $91 million. Turf Paradise alone generated over $200,000 in sales tax revenue to the City of Phoenix. By approving this off-track betting application, you put all of that at risk. So I would ask that, on behalf of a 65-year-old Phoenix-based company, on behalf of the more than 325 people that we employ, we would ask that you would deny this application. And if I may concede the last 30 seconds to Mr. Sims, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. I just want to tell you that another possibility for today is that when they closed their doors after 13 days of racing, the horsemen and the racing commission asked to find out what was going on. How did that happen? So the Department of Racing is finishing up a report on what happened. How did that happen that they opened 13 days of racing and closed? That report might be something you'd want to look at with all the financial information of what happened just prior to, if you do approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Milton Gabaldon.
Good afternoon. I have an establishment called the Tap House, Parkview Tap House in Fountain Hills, Arizona, and I was hooked up with Arizona Downs on the horse racing. And I go in and out of New Mexico because I take care of my mother. One day I went home here a few weeks ago and I come back, I get a phone call from my manager, they snuck in and they closed the doors on me on the racing. So this is Arizona Downs on what they did to me. Sure, you know, we're in business for 60, 65 days. I have a very successful restaurant and bar, so it does well without it, but we're in business for a little better than two months and apparently they couldn't afford to stay much longer than that. It's crazy. I have no interest in what's going on here. I have interest in my place. I think this is something you all ought to know. You know, I get a letter left there for my customers saying that until further notice... Well, they should have at least talked to me prior to going in there and doing this. They give me checks, well, one, and you know, it's not good. So what's going on there is beyond me and my future endeavors is what I'll do with it. I don't know, but just thought I'd let you know for your information. And I do have copies of all that paperwork, the checks and the notices here if you need copies. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any council member questions or comments? Councilwoman Stark.
Very quickly, so a lot of these issues sound like they're racing commission issues and they have filed with the racing commission, correct?
Mayor, members of the council, correct. They have applied with the racing commission as well. The City of Phoenix is...
And so it's really up to them to look into this kind of issue of how they operate. We're just here looking at whether or not it's appropriate in this location. So with that, I'll recommend approval and let the racing commission do what they need to do.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
And?
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Williams?
I will not support the vote. I have some statements about their financial policies and the reports from the racing commission that we need to ensure that we're putting good businesses in next to neighborhoods. The answer is no.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego? Yes. Item passes 72. Thank you. We next move to the ordinance resolutions, new business and planning and zoning portion of our agenda. City clerk, are we ready for a motion? Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve items 16 through 68, except the following. Items 35 and 68, item 23 is being requested to be continued to December 18, 2019. Item 41 has been withdrawn. Item 36 is as revised and excluding these items for public comment is only item 27.
Item 42 is also... Is item 42 included?
It is not. Okay, so item 42.
So item 42 would be held for... Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call. DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Williams? Williams? Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego? Yes. Item passes 80. Thank you. We next move to the ordinance resolutions, new business and planning and zoning portion of our agenda. City clerk, are we ready for a motion? Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve items 16 through 68, except the following. Items 35 and 68, item 23 is being requested to be continued to December 18, 2019. Item 41 has been withdrawn. Item 36 is as revised and excluding these items for public comment is only item 27.
Item 42 is also... Is item 42 included?
It is not. Okay, so item 42.
So item 42 would be held for... Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call. DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Williams? Williams? Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego? Yes. Item passes 80. Item 27. We have a card from Catherine Roxlow, who is opposed. Catherine, if you'd please come down, you have two minutes to address the count.
Hi, my name is Catherine Roxlow. Mayor and council members, I oppose the sale of the APS, of the land to APS. It was item 27 and I would request that it be continued as a lease. They aren't making any more land in the Phoenix area. We have a limited amount and we, the city, need this land. Many of the public infrastructure items right now are shifting. The paradigms of how we get electricity is shifting. Our water needs are shifting and this land is important. The City of Phoenix may need this land in 50 years, more than APS needs it. This land is our land. Do not sell it. Hold it for the public, for our children, and for our children's children, please.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Any council member comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Move item number 27.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call. DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Williams? Yes. Item passes 80. Item 27. We have a card from Catherine Roxlow, who is opposed. Catherine, if you'd please come down, you have two minutes to address the count.
Hi, my name is Catherine Roxlow. Mayor and council members, I oppose the sale of the APS, of the land to APS. It was item 27 and I would request that it be continued as a lease. They aren't making any more land in the Phoenix area. We have a limited amount and we, the city, need this land. Many of the public infrastructure items right now are shifting. The paradigms of how we get electricity is shifting. Our water needs are shifting and this land is important. The City of Phoenix may need this land in 50 years, more than APS needs it. This land is our land. Do not sell it. Hold it for the public, for our children, and for our children's children, please.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Any council member comments or questions? Councilwoman Stark?
Very quickly, so a lot of these issues sound like they're racing commission issues and they have filed with the racing commission, correct?
Mayor, members of the council, correct. They have applied with the racing commission as well. The City of Phoenix is...
And so it's really up to them to look into this kind of issue of how they operate. We're just here looking at whether or not it's appropriate in this location. So with that, I'll recommend approval and let the racing commission do what they need to do.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
And?
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
I will not support the vote. I have some statements about their financial policies and the reports from the racing commission that we need to ensure that we're putting good businesses in next to neighborhoods. The answer is no.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego? Yes. Item passes 80. Thank you. We next move to the ordinance resolutions, new business and planning and zoning portion of our agenda. City clerk, are we ready for a motion? Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve items 16 through 68, except the following. Items 35 and 68, item 23 is being requested to be continued to December 18, 2019. Item 41 has been withdrawn. Item 36 is as revised and excluding these items for public comment is only item 27.
Item 42 is also... Is item 42 included?
It is not. Okay, so item 42.
So item 42 would be held for... Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call. DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego? Yes. Item passes 80. We next move to item 35. Item 35 is an adjustment to pay for several of our city employees. Earlier this year, we adjusted all full-time employees at the City of Phoenix to $15 an hour and this item would also bring our year-round, part-time employees to $15 an hour. We have one card from Jennifer Grundal.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. We are in favor of this item. My name is Jennifer Grundal. I work with Launa Local 777. We represent Unit 1 employees in public works, parks, streets, and... I'm too close. My voice already carries. Every time I come up here, I say something a little ridiculous. That's fine. Glad I never watched these a second time. One, I want to thank you because earlier this year, you did vote overwhelmingly so to increase the pay to a livable wage to $15 an hour. It is something that we have worked over half a decade for now, almost six full years. Since May 1st, it has dramatically changed people's lives. As you may be aware, Phoenix has the fastest and highest increases in rent throughout the nation, which was a stat I didn't know until a few months ago. So this has alleviated a little bit of that pain so that people don't have to go to the grocery store and think, "Do I buy this or do I don't, or pay my rent? Or do I wait a couple of days and pay my rent and maybe I won't get a late fee?" This has dramatically changed the lives of those people, which has been wonderful and thank you very much. All of us thank you for that. And we don't always agree. Sometimes we don't agree, but I think that each time, we have very healthy discussions, they're productive discussions, and we find a resolution that helps everyone and we better everyone's life. And we greatly appreciate that and the work that you all do to help us. We are now in favor of raising the non-seasonal part-time employees to $15 an hour as well so they can have that same livable wage that we fought for for the full-time employees earlier this year. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Just to stand... Just stay there. No, we really appreciate everything that you've done. You've always been one of the most, if not the most, workable individuals that we could work with, with the labor groups. You've always been fantastic to work with. We don't always agree on things, but I got to tell you, you are an amazing individual. You really do a great job representing your unit, coming from me, sometimes on the other side, quite a bit sometimes, but in a situation like this, we're in agreement. And you've really pushed your case and you've done an amazing job to get us... Last time we were uniform. Hope it's the way it is today, but you've really done a really good job representing your unit and they should be very proud of the work and so should you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I also want to compliment Jennifer and her team. This was an issue you brought before us, made the argument about how it would strengthen our city and now we are moving forward. This is really important for our employees who work in our after-school programs. They are taking care of our future leaders of the city. This also is very meaningful to the employees who keep our libraries going. We know that these jobs are very important to them and we hope that we are providing a fair wage that'll be an investment for the city, improve retention and help make sure we are taking care of our employees. So, an exciting win for the City of Phoenix and for our entire community. Vice Mayor?
Well, thank you so much, Jennifer. I am very happy... Oops, sorry. To be able to support this item, you know, when I was out knocking on doors, I think I keep repeating the same story over and over again. Seeing people having to decide whether they're going to pay their rent, if they're going to put food on the table, was part of the conversation that I always had with people when I was knocking on doors. In District 5, there's like such a huge need for good jobs, for people to be able to have a living wage.[1619.01] In District Five, there's such a huge need for good jobs, for people to be able to have a living wage. I think it's incredibly important. I applaud the work that you do day in and day out. As a former colleague, I understand how difficult that is to be able to carry out that work. But also, as a city, we are facing unprecedented rental increases, stagnant wages, and record levels of evictions in a skyrocketing homeless population. I believe that the right solutions will require all members of our community, elected officials, business owners, city staff, developers, nonprofit organizations, labor leaders like yourself, to all work together. Today, I am honored to serve on a city council that is raising wages in the City of Phoenix. I sincerely hope that other cities and businesses in the private sector will follow our example. Thank you so much for all the work that you do.
Councilwoman Noakowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I want to thank our staff. I think this is really what I call the Team Phoenix approach, where we all come together. And I know that it was, you know, our past mayor, Thelva, started this, and then Kate, seeing that there was a need to make sure that the part-timers were getting their fair share also. So, I want to thank the leadership of both the past mayor and the present mayor for making this all possible, and all my colleagues, even the past colleagues that were just here before April. And thank you all for your leadership, for standing up, for doing the right thing. You know, that was Vanya and Felicita Mendoza for voting for this too. So, all that, it was really a team effort, and it was really working along with all of our employees and listening to their concerns and feeling the pain. When we needed your guys' help, you guys stepped up to the plate, and it was our way to step up to the plate also. So, we remember back in 2010, all those sacrifices that you all have done to make sure that we had all the senior centers, youth centers, and all the parks and amenities that we have in the City of Phoenix. So, that's what's... Those are the great employees that we have in the city, and this is just a small token of our appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Pastor?
I really appreciate everything that we've done and that we're going to vote on. I would like to know, I'd like to know if staff is here. I have a question for staff.
Our human resources director is here.
Good afternoon, mayor, members of the council. Councilwoman Pastor, with me today is Deputy Director Greg Carmichael. He is our Deputy Director over classification and compensation.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you for all your good work, and thank you for moving this forward. My question is, it says "nonseasonal," so, which is great, but does that include parks and recs, lifeguards, and any of the people that are hired during the summer? And I'm talking about the youth that get hired. Does this wage match their positions?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pastor, no. The lifeguards are not included in this. We are including non-seasonal part-time employees, so year-round part-time employees. The seasonal employees, which would include the lifeguards, as well as some of our election seasonal staff, are not included in this proposal.
So, may I ask for the future to look into that and see what the cost is, and possibly bringing that to the council? Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve item thirty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Callejo?
Yes. Passes eight to one. We next move to item forty-two. Do we have any cards on this item? Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on item forty-two?
Yes, I would like to make a motion on item forty-two.
Second.
Any council member comments? Roll call.
DeCecio?
No.
Garcia?
No.
Noakowski?
I have a no on this one.
I'm sorry. Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
No.
Callejo?
Yes. Item fails four to five. We next move to item sixty-eight. Item sixty-eight concerns the northwest corner of Forty-Fourth Street and Camelback Road. We will begin with a brief staff report from Alan Stevenson, our Planning and Development Director.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. This particular request is a rezoning of a seventeen point seven-two acre site from CO to PUD for a mixed-use development. Staff does recommend approval subject to stipulations. The PowerPoint shows the subject location. There's Forty-Fourth Street, here's Camelback Road. The northwest corner is right there, outlined in yellow. This is the existing zoning map, which is a number of commercial office CO zoning cases over the years that govern development on the site and will be replaced with the PUD if approved by council. This is the proposed site plan that has a number of different buildings on the site. This area in the back is the most restrictive with self-storage and office uses, parking structure, and, you know, then a mixed-use commercial, proposed hotel. This is the sun's practice facility center here, and proposed mixed-use office, you know, here as well, and then office in this particular building. With the proposed PUD, one of the things that is a tool that can be used is a tailoring of a zoning district to specify uses that allow for a property to be economically viable for redevelopment, but also tailor the uses and standards to a particular area. So, in this case, the applicant developed a couple of unique standards relative to these subzones that outline different uses, so that back in this area here, for example, closer to the neighborhood, you can't have hotel or retail uses. This next one is a breakout of the height on the proposed site, with the more restrictive heights back in by the neighborhood, and then going out as part of the proposed building height up to seventy-five feet on the two corners here. But you couldn't put seventy-five feet of height back in here, because the PUD does not permit it. So, it is a great use of that PUD tool to really tailor it to allow redevelopment, but also protections for the neighborhood. This slide right here shows a memo that came out just a little while ago today, which is, represents an agreement between several neighborhood groups within the immediate area and some of the larger areas that had concerns about the proposal, and the project development team. And so, that lowers the immediate corner height to, from seventy-five feet to fifty-nine feet for the proposed hotel use right here, fifty-eight feet for the proposed office development down here, and then does provide a mix of thirty-six and forty-two feet for this particular area down here. There are another change in there. Part of the memo outlines that a sound consultant would have to be hired to do an acoustical study and plan to, for some of the rooftop uses within the hotel to provide noise mitigation measures up in that particular area, and then also a step-back provision for some of the buildings right on the immediate corner down in this area by the office at the intersection of Camelback and Forty-Fourth. This is the proposed project elevations. Staff does recommend approval per the memo today, November twentieth. With those stipulations that I just summarized, I would add that the request was approved by the Camelback East Village Planning Committee by eleven to six vote, and also the Planning Commission by a seven to zero vote. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for our planning director? Thank you for that presentation. We will open the public hearing. We have nine individuals to speak in favor of the project, two opposed, one filling out a card neutral. We have fifty-nine cards in favor of the project, not wishing to speak, and four opposed to the project, also not wishing to speak. We'll begin with Tim Lasota.
Thank you, mayor, and good afternoon, mayor and members of the council. I am Timothy Lasota, twenty-one ninety-eight East Camelback Road, Suite three oh five, Phoenix. And I'm happy today to be here in support of this project. I had attended Planning Commission and opposed it, but I'm happy to be on the other side today. We had a marathon session with a number of stakeholders yesterday, and it produced what we view as a very worthy result that I think we can all be proud of. So, I do want to thank Red Development and Fox Restaurant Concepts for their willingness to forge ahead and to keep working on this, and to finally find a path forward that a number of the neighbors who had previously been opposed could support. So, I want to thank them. Most of all, I'd like to thank a lot of the neighbors involved in this process. I know Marvin Borsand is here, and he wants to speak. I saw a number of others who had been involved in the process, including Wally Graham from Arcadia Osborne Neighborhood Association. Jim Binns was helpful. I think I saw a couple of others. I think Paul Barnes wants to speak for himself. But I think this is a great path forward, and I would certainly urge council to support this with the stipulations.
Thank you. Any questions? Next, we will have Ed Bull, followed by Mike Ebert.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. Ed Bull, seven oh two East Osborne. I represent Red Development, represent one of the underlying landowners as well, which is Camel Square LLC, and then I'm registered to speak on behalf of SWF Hospitality, which is Sam Fox and the Suns and the Mercury. We are... We're here to thank a legion of neighbors in support. Those who were in opposition now in support. Thank a whole army of people who met well into the night last night and started again early this morning to reach the agreement that is outlined in staff's supplemental memo. I have a lengthy PowerPoint presentation, if you want to see it. I'm going to guess you don't. Instead, I think you'd rather I sat down, but I do want to emphasize that we're requesting approval in accordance with the stipulations in staff's supplemental memo, which includes the five stipulations that we worked out with numerous neighborhood representatives last night and reconfirmed this morning. So, with that, if you want more of a presentation, I'll be happy to give it. If you've heard plenty from me, I'm happy to hand it over to Mike Ebert and Sam Fox and others if they choose to speak.
Thank you. Any council member questions? Appreciate your testimony.
I hope to not have to be back on rebuttal, but we'll see.
We will have next Mike Ebert, followed by Marvin Borsand.
Thank you, mayor, and all council members. That's the shortest presentation Ed Bull's ever done. Mike Ebert, managing partner, Red Development, One East Washington. Sometimes life comes full circle. In nineteen eighty-five, I started my real estate career at this property, working for a small company. In nineteen ninety-four, we started Red Development across the street, right behind where the Henry is today. Red now owns thirty great properties, including the three-block property downtown, which is Cityscape, and now the New Fries Grocery Store. I'm a Phoenix resident, and Red is a downtown Phoenix-based company. Our role as master developer is a role that we take very seriously. As master developer of the property, we've successfully secured the elite private Phoenix Suns and Mercury training facility and the hotel that Sam Fox will plan and develop. I thank both Robert Sarver and Sam Fox for their commitment to us and their continued reinvestments into the community. During these last fourteen months, we have extensively worked with multiple neighborhood associations, and we appreciate the efforts of Michelle Kemp and Tim Lasota, the Arcadia Villa homeowners, and all the others for participating in a long and collaborative process. We appreciate the leadership of Jay Swart at the Camelback East Village Committee and Justin Johnson at Planning Commission. We do ask for your support, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Marvin will be followed by Paul Barnes.
Thank you, Marvin Borsand. First, I'd like to thank Shannon Johnson. I know she's in the audience. Without her, our entire group of no to seventy-five feet and all the seven surrounding neighborhoods really would have not gotten together to work on this project. We were told early on that the fix was in. Don't bother. I was told that even at my own Arcadia Camelback Neighborhood and Mountain Association. Don't bother. But Shannon was persistent. She met with us all, and over the last fifteen, sixteen months, we're able to work diligently on this. And I also want to thank Sal DeCecio. He may not think I would thank him, but I do want to thank him, because when we were getting very close, he met with us, and he said, "You know, we got some neighbors that are kind of in favor of this, although it was a little questionable. You know, I will do what the neighborhood asks." So, I think he's a man of his word. So, we took him at it, and we got eleven hundred signatures to bring to him to show that the people in the neighborhood really were opposed. And I think because of that, and of the council people that met with us, which included the mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, Councilman Garcia, Councilwoman Stark, and Guardo, Councilman Cardo, that met with us, and that gave us a little more, I think, strength than to meet with Ed Bull and Mike and their group. And we hammered after a three-and-a-half-hour meeting. I think we all walked out happy, and it's going to be a tremendous development, redevelopment of our neighborhood. So, I'm, and our, excuse me for that, are certainly in support with the amendments that we are able to put together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your hard work on this. Paul Barnes will be followed by Sam Fox.
Paul Barnes, a forty-year-old past resident of the Arcadia Camelback Mountain Neighborhood Association area. I've had a long association with this project. Remember, back in 2011, the city council, in its wisdom, assigned a million square feet to this site and increased the height from thirty-six feet to fifty-six feet. That was all supposed to be office, CO office. No way in the world could that site accommodate a million square foot of office, as indicated by the fact that it's vacant, except for three hundred and eighty-five thousand square feet of office. We were very much opposed to the height of seventy-five feet, and this is simply because Forty-Fourth and Camelback is not one of the three Camelback East Village Planning Committee zones where you have high density. You have one at Forty-Fourth and Thomas, you have one at Camelback and Twenty-Fourth Street, and you have one at Forty-Fourth and Van Buren. Those are your core areas. This is not a core area. The core areas are where seventy-five feet and above belongs. I was involved last night in this long meeting from, I guess it was three-thirty to seven. We went back and forth. We had several discussions. The developer, Red, and others were congenial. They were amenable to some of our suggestions. We were amenable to some of their suggestions. And while perhaps maybe some of the height is still a little higher than I personally would like to see, I fully publicly support the results of that meeting, and I hope the city council will adopt those stipulations along with what else we have. This can be a good project. There's no question that that area needs improvement, and never, ever were the neighborhoods opposed to redevelopment of that area. It was just a seventy-five-feet height that was a stop. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sam Fox will be followed by Jeff Malaznick.
Thank you, mayor and council. My name is Sam Fox, four four five five East Camelback. I've been dreaming of this hotel project for over six years. Over those years, I've had plenty of opportunities to be involved in many hotels all over the country, but I've always said no, because I always wanted to do this in my hometown. This whole process has been eye-opening for me, from Camelback East Village Planning Committee to the Planning Commission, and here today at city council. My biggest takeaway from the journey is how passionate people are about the City of Phoenix and the communities they live in. That's what makes Phoenix such a great place to live, and why I'm excited to build a world-class boutique hotel that we can all be proud of. I want to thank you all for your leadership, and hopefully you'll vote for our project today. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jeff will be followed by Julia Patrick.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm here on behalf of Red Development, One East Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona, to ask for your support for our rezoning of the Forty-Fourth Street and Camelback project. I see Wally Graham here. This saga started with Wally and I, and it ended last night late, with Wally and I shaking hands and thanking each other for doing something that hadn't been done in Arcadia before, which is bringing everybody together in support from all the various different neighborhoods. I'd also like to thank Sam. He's had confidence and trust in us. A little-known story, we developed a project in Dallas. Don't hold it against us. Sam agreed to do a Henry restaurant in that project. At the time, he also agreed to do a North restaurant. Everybody in Dallas was ecstatic over North. They had no idea what Henry was. So, we started flying people back and forth from Dallas to Phoenix to show them the Henry. We leased up an office building with five hundred thousand square feet of office space in Dallas by touring the Henry with Sam, who cordially took them through. So, I look forward to watching Sam develop this hotel and export this talent again throughout the rest of the country, so that people will realize what is being incubated in Phoenix versus elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. And Julia will be followed by Melissa Bull.
Mayor, vice mayor, council. My name is Julia C. Patrick. I am the resident who lives closest to this project, and I speak in profound support of it. Fifty years ago, my father was actually the original developer and assembled all of the land that then ultimately resulted in thirteen buildings. Those buildings were built in a time when fax machines did not even exist. Now is a time to embrace some change, exciting services, and products by Arizona-based businesses. We are incredibly excited about this project, and we see it as another crown, jewel in the crown of the City of Phoenix. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa will be followed by Ron Ober.
Good afternoon, council and mayor. My name is Melissa Bull. I reside at forty-four eleven North Fortieth Street, and I have lived in the City of Phoenix since ninety-four. I'm a commercial interior designer. I've worked in Camel Square for four years. My husband also worked in that Camel Square complex for twenty years. I was opposed to, worked with Marvin in collecting signatures and getting together with the community to oppose the two buildings, the hotel and the office building at seventy-five feet. And while I was out collecting signatures with my daughter over the weekend in opposition, we got to talk to a number of the neighbors, and so we collected signatures in opposition. We collected approximately... We collected approximately seventy of those. When we did walk through the neighborhood, we had the site plan, and we had the inspirational images for the hotel and the office. People were, their eyes were opened. They were quite surprised to see what the developers are planning. They had a lot of negative comments to make. They were very concerned about the glass, the amount of glass on the office building, the black finestration, and just the other three-D image that's in the PUD also shows a lot of dark finishes to the architecture. So the big concern that we have is that we don't have enough information about the design, number one. Number two, everybody is concerned about the pedestrian feel that we have in the neighborhood. We would like to see greater setbacks with the hotel and the office building so that we can create essentially what's happening on the east side of Forty-Fourth Street with the retail and the restaurants and the good feel and vibe in that area. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of my family and the seventy people that we had conversations with. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron will be followed by Matt Evans.
Ron Ober, thirty-six, Thirty-Six North Central Avenue, Suite 590. I filled out a yellow card just in case it was necessary to speak. It is not. I think what you're hearing today is a great example of what can happen when people talk to each other and not past each other, and I think that Red Development's done a fantastic job here, and so have the neighbors, and thank you very much, and this will be a great project.
Thank you. Matt will be followed by Brian Brown.
... I just had a text saying that Matt Evans was over late at the crisis home call.
Okay.
Is in support that Matt...
We will note in the record that Matt Evans is in support. Brian Brown will be followed by Randall Pollan.
Madam Mayor, I'll relinquish my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. It's a pleasure to be here to speak with you in support of this project at Forty-Fourth and Camelback. I grew up in the neighborhood. My paper route was at Forty-Fourth Street and Indian School, so I delivered papers for a number of years there. As a partner with Deloitte and Touche, I was in charge of their hospitality consulting practice across the country. I worked on many projects all over the country. Here locally, I worked on, with Governor Fife Symington, on the Twenty-Fourth Street and Camelback corridor, which included the Ritz-Carlton Hotel in the corner, as well as I worked with Charles Keating on the Phoenician when he was developing that project, and also with Fred Unger when he was redoing the Hermosa Inn as well as redoing the Royal Palms. So I consulted with all them, and I've looked at this project, and over the years, there's been many projects proposed at this site, and by far, this is the best, well-thought-out project I've seen on this corner, and I totally support it. The hotel concept, I think, makes a lot of sense, having a boutique hotel on that corner. I think it'll be very popular. I think you'll see a lot of people coming down from the airport down Forty-Fourth Street to stay at that hotel. So I am a hundred percent supportive of the project, and thank you for the time to be able to address you.
Thank you. I just received a card from Richard Spiegel.
Members of the council, my name is Richard Spiegel, five-five-oh-two East Calle de Norte. I live in Arcadia, and I guess I'm the curmudgeon here, who's not very happy about this. I came in late, but I understand there's a compromise with the neighborhood associations. I was a past member of the Camelback Village Planning Committee, and the subcommittee actually was just mentioned, about Twenty-Fourth Street. I was on the subcommittee to work with the developers for more than a year, developing the plans for that, and one of the main goals was to make sure that we had views of Camelback Mountain, and that's why all the buildings on the north side of the area are stepped up to be sure that there's a free view of Camelback. The plan that was in place with fifty-five-foot limit was a compromise that the neighborhoods were not very happy about, but they were forced through it because the building on the south side had already been built before the plan was in place. So what's happening now is we're asked to compromise again, to compromise an odious compromise with another compromise. I'm surprised that the neighborhoods were willing to go along with this, so I don't know if I'm a lone voice, but you're still going to block Camelback Mountain. Fifty-five feet would be adequate. Mr. Fox is a brilliant, energetic, innovative man. I'm sure he could make a very good hotel at fifty-five feet. Doesn't need the extra ten feet that'll come with the stuff on top of it. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all the cards I have wishing to speak on this item. We are going to close the public hearing. This item is in Councilman DeCiccio's district. Councilman.
Go ahead. So I just have a couple of comments. So first, I want to thank the neighbors for all the work, all the awareness that was brought to this project, and I'm also very thankful to Red, to Councilmember Sal DeCiccio on working with the neighbors. I think that when we work as a collective, when we listen to each other, and when we talk to each other, we usually can find compromise, and we can usually find a way to work together and making sure that everyone feels that everyone's voices have been heard. I know that it's not easy when we are the fifth-largest city in the country, and we keep growing by the day, and things are changing, and as things are changing and thriving in our city, we're going to have to talk to each other even more and more. I know that for our marathon meeting was not easy for anyone that was part of that meeting, so thank you for doing that. Trust me, I get it. I know that it's not an easy thing to do, but I am very grateful for all the work that was put into this project and the long hours that it took to make this happen. So at this point, I am very honored and happy to be able to support this project, and I would like to make a motion to approve, per the memo, from the Planning and Development Director dated November twentieth, twenty nineteen, and adopt the related ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman DeCiccio.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. And, you know, complicated, this is probably the most complicated project on the most complicated piece of property we have in the city of Phoenix, and this property goes back, how many years? Multiple years. It's always been something controversial, and today, we have, and I'll just, I want to thank the neighbors for just really pulling it together, making it work for yourselves, protecting your neighborhood, and doing everything you can to put things that are in place that give the protections that you believe strongly, people like Wally Graham, Paul Barnes, Neil Haddad, I didn't see Neil here, Marvin Borssan. Marvin, thank you. I know we've had a few conversations on this thing, and you've always been driving what needs to happen. Shannon Johnson, I didn't see Shannon here. She should have spoke to... Oh, you're over there? They banned you? I get banned over here, too, so it doesn't... So Rick Spiegel, I saw from days past. It's good seeing you again. We had, let's see, who else do we have? I just hope I didn't forget anyone. Oh, Jim and Connie Benz, good seeing you folks again. We've had a few battles ourselves, too. Tim Lasota, from your end of it, where are you at, Tim? You have had major wins these last couple of weeks, representing neighborhood groups and actually just massive wins. More power to you. You've always been fantastic to work with. You've always been a joy. We don't always agree on things, but at the same time, you've always been workable, try to find ways to make things work. On the council up here, mayor, got to thank you for your leadership on this, and Vice Mayor Guardado and Michael Nowakowski over here, those three in particular, not that everyone has it, but those three in particular drove this and said, and this is their comments to me, "Sal, we've got to have quality. We've got to have neighborhood protections in this thing. If it wasn't for your leadership, in particular, the three of you here, I don't think we would even be here today. We just would not be here for that." And then to the developers, Mike Ebert, Sam Fox, you guys are rock stars. The fact that you're doing business in the city of Phoenix and the type of risk that you put out, people don't forget about that. It's easy to always attack and to say, "Hey, look, you're bad individuals." People forget about the level of risk you put out. This is a three-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar project in the city of Phoenix, three-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, and the fact of the matter is, these types of things aren't done in a vacuum. They're done as a team effort. So when you look at the neighborhood groups, developer team, Mike and Sam, and the members up here on the council, the mayor, Vice Mayor Guardado, and Michael Nowakowski in particular, this would never have been accomplished if this wasn't a team effort. And, you know, team efforts are difficult sometimes because you always have pushes and pulls, and those types of things are going to occur. But for the first time that I can remember, and I've been here for a little while, that we've got, and I'm going to name off these neighborhood groups that are in support of a project, never seen this before. Wally, I did mention you two, didn't I? I hope, I didn't want to forget about you there, because I know how, oh, thank you so much. Give me the name again, I forgot. Well, your pointings. Yeah, oh, thanks. Thank you for that. Sorry. A little frozen up here, too. So, forget everyone's names, sorry. Arcadia Camelback Mountain Neighborhood Association, Arcadia Osborne, that's two, three, Arcadia Villa, four, Cudia City, five, Hacienda Granada, six, Marion Estates, seven, Short Hills, seven, Neighborhood Coalition of Greater Phoenix, eight, Park Paradise and the villages at Camelback Mountain, that's nine. Nine neighborhood groups coming together, working together to try to make the city of Phoenix a better place. Thank you for everything that you've done on this. I want to give special thanks to my colleagues up here for driving quality, and because if you've ever eaten at one of Sam Fox's restaurants, you really ought to try it. It's all quality. If something is not in the right place, it's not going to work. And then I forgot about Danny Sheraby. Danny, raise your hand as a village member, and Jay Swart, you guys deserve a lot of credit for making this thing work. I mean, the amount of volunteer work that you put in there, Danny. Is Jay here, too? Anyone else from the village? Because normally, we get some people from the village here. These are volunteers that go out of their way to do the work that they do. And Danny, how many calls have you given me? Like, "Hey, can we do this here? Can we do that?", all the way leading into this. So these types of things are done as a team effort. The city of Phoenix is an amazing place. We want the business community in particular to know we are open for business. We are looking for the types of projects that you bring. We respect the fact that you make investments in our community. We appreciate you. Very few people tell you thank you for doing business in Phoenix. We up here collectively are telling you today, thank you for all that you do and the investments that you're putting in the city. Thank you, everybody.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Mayor, I really want to thank Sal for his leadership. I mean, what he's done is amazing. This is amazing that you're able to bring all nine neighborhood associations together, have a conversation for four hours, and one of the things that Sal's always taught me is that you bring people around the table, you have a conversation, even though it's difficult, you find that common ground, you grow from that. And I've learned a lot from you, and this is another fine example of finding that common ground and just, and growing from it. You know, it's amazing that we have such talented individuals here in the city of Phoenix. You know, Mike Eber and Jeff, I mean, just Red Development, anytime we need something from the city of Phoenix, help with a concert or help to create some type of funky atmosphere in downtown Phoenix, they're always open to crazy ideas like an ice skating rink. Who would ever think we would have an ice skating rink in downtown Phoenix? But you all made it happen, and it's because you care. It's not just that you care about Phoenix, but you care enough that you live here and you raise your family here. So I just really want to thank you all. Mr. Fox, I really don't know you that well, but I know that your restaurants are great, and I've eaten in there, and I just want to thank you for all your investments and all your hard work and patience in this whole process, because sometimes it takes a while, and I know how frustrating it gets. And once again, Sal, really thank you for your leadership. This is really all possible from all the leaders out here in the community, but really you heading it all. So thank you, Sal.
Councilman DeCiccio.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot Robert Sarver, because I didn't see him here, for making this large investment in the community and in the city of Phoenix. I mean, look at his son's team, it's doing amazing well today, too. And so, but we do want to thank Robert, too, for the work that he's put into this, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your hard work on this. We appreciate people sitting down, talking about what matters. It was wonderful for our Parks Department just to hear how much Camelback Mountain and the park means to the city. I understand this morning at the Parks Subcommittee, we talked about the fact that Phoenix has the most acres of parks of any, within our city limits of any large city, and so that is a credit to our city and the passion, as well as the passion people have for our businesses and our neighborhoods. Any further comments? Councilwoman Pastor.
So I really would like to thank the neighbors and the neighborhoods coming together and really pushing to a common ground. As I met with you, you can see what's happening, and what I told you was going to happen. And I would like to thank Red. Red, I'm hoping that we get more trees planted, due to the fact of all the petitions and all the trees that were cut down in order to prove, to show us what you were showing us. So I'm hoping that in our tree, we have a tree campaign going on, and so I'm hoping to see that along with Sam and Sarver to donate to our tree effort. But really appreciate everything that happened. As you know, and you met with me, I said, "This is a moving target in the sense that it's always going to move, someone's going to move here," and we're playing chess. And I also stated that I will stay strong and solid up until the day we vote, and because on the day we vote, something will always change in the process, and so I've learned that, and it's taken me this long to get there, but I've learned it. So I really appreciate everybody's efforts, especially Shannon Johnson and Melissa Bull. I wasn't able to meet with you, but I heard your name throughout this whole process, and Melissa, for you taking your daughter along with you and getting the petitions and teaching her what civic engagement is all about, and of course, the gentlemen, but I just wanted to point out the women that were part of it, and so I'm happy we got to where we got to. Thank you.
Councilman DeCiccio.
You do forget to mention people. Probably the most critical person who went out there and did all the legwork is Leila Wrestler. Could you raise up your hand? I mean, you had your people out there, you did the door-to-door, you contacted people. I mean, you were amazing. You were amazing gathering support out there, and I apologize, it's like I was looking right there, and I'm like, I know I forgot somebody, and here it is, I forgot you as I was looking at you, too, so...
It was just here.
It was just there. But, you know, thanks for all that you did on this thing, Leila. You really pulled it together and made this thing work.
Councilwoman Stark.
I just have a question for Sam. You know, I had my birthday meal at North, and you get a free dessert. Have you thought about a free appetizer, having a choice? Thank you.
She was originally going to ask for sneak previews of the menu, but... Any further comments from the council? Everyone's getting hungry. Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Waring, where are you? Okay, all right, got to make sure. We're going to get that nine-zero, remember?
Williams.
Yep.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego. Yes. Item passes nine to zero. We have one resident here to address the council during citizen public comment. I'll turn it over briefly to our city attorney for an explanation of citizen public comment.
Mayor, members of the council, the citizen comment part of the agenda provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The Arizona Open Meeting Act permits the council to listen to the comments from the public, but prohibits the members from discussing or taking action on matters presented during citizen comment.
Thank you. Catherine Roxlow.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm Catherine Roxlow. I live at 7506 North 22nd Place. This rain is wonderful. I love it. I love Phoenix, the city of Phoenix. I love this rain, but I hear we're in a record drought, and the city of Phoenix Water Department says on their website, "It's an unprecedented drought in written history." The Water Department recently told my neighborhood they intend to put a drought pipeline in for current residents of North Phoenix, and it's interesting to me that APS is buying land in northern Phoenix to expand their power production for future residences the same time that the city water department is saying they need a new pipeline for current residents. I just want to request that the city prioritize a new 100-year water supply evaluation for the city, given that we have different conditions in our climate and in the situation for water in Phoenix, and that they do that before they continue additional water pipeline construction. The Water Department and utilities are saying they're justifying rushing this project because of cap water that will be turned off soon, and my understanding from other sources is that that is not true and that the cap water will be available for quite a while for residents and neighbors that are currently residing in Phoenix. Please prioritize a new 100-year water supply. We need this before we put in pumps and pipelines to move water around that may not even exist and be here for us in the next 20 or 30 years. We need to evaluate our best sources and use for our clean and our gray water, and to encourage the Water Department to strengthen our water conservation efforts in the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We are adjourned.